Meeting for order at seven oh four. Uh, the public may address the board. I don't see anyone here in person. Is anyone online?
Yeah, there's. There's only attendance, but.
Yes. No one's raised their hand.
Yeah.
So we're gonna move on to principal.
Excellent. Welcome back, everybody. It's great to see you all in person this evening. As we all get so redoing the mask mandate here in Hanover, it's good to see your smiling eyes. So although there are a lot of exciting things that happened over the summer and that we're heading into for the school year, and at the end, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm gonna start with an enrollment update for this evening. Believe it or not, this is a big wowzers. We have four hundred ninety-two students currently registered, which represents more than thirty students above what was projected for enrollment for this year. I'm gonna give you the breakdown next. In kindergarten, we have eighty-three students, and we're gonna have five sections, which gives us sixteen or seventeen students per class. I'm gonna update you on the teachers who are gonna be teaching each grade. We'll have Conley, Landry, Wilson, Hotveck, and Atherly teaching kindergarten in this upcoming year. In first grade, we have eighty students across five sections, which is sixteen per classroom, and the teachers will be Temple, Butters, Phillips Whitehair, Ecker, and Orland. In grade two, we have seventy-three students registered in four sections, which is eighteen or nineteen students per class, and our teachers will be Young, Whaley, Vashel, and Richardson. In third grade, we have seventy-six students, four sections, nineteen students per class, and our teachers are Crawford, Waterhouse, Hunt, and Bish. In fourth grade, we have eighty-six students across four sections, which will be twenty-one or twenty-two students per class. Our four teachers will be Clarkson, Monmany, Pedrickson, and Skriemer. And in fifth grade, ninety-four students across five sections, which is eighteen or nineteen students per class, and our teachers are Roy, Waxman, Clifford, Harold, and Stone. Uh, around placement and beginning of year information, we've been working diligently to receive and place all incoming students while maintaining balanced classes created by Ray staff back in the spring. Parents should expect to receive information about placement and other important items by the end of the day on Monday, two weeks before the start of school. This will include the Ray School Pandemic Response Handbook, which takes the SAU seventy framework and details the nuances about protocols and guidelines that will impact our specific school and elementary population. I'm excited to let you know that we are finally able to hold our responsive classroom trainings, and this is three years in the making, thanks to the pandemic. We committed to doing this in person, which hasn't been an option over the past couple of years. So we're excited to be hosting the four-day elementary core course at the Ray School, August sixteenth through the nineteenth. And we're also hosting a one-day support staff working together course at the Ray School on August seventeenth. With common language, routines, expectations, and procedures across Ray staff, we will continue to work together to meet the needs of all of our students. We're grateful for the support of the Friends of Hanover Norwich Schools, uh, for their generous support of this effort supplemented by other state grant funding. An update about staffing now. We want to give farewell and best wishes to some of our staff members that since the end of last year have decided to pursue different journeys and adventures. So here are a few more folks that we extend our gratitude to for their time and service at Ray as they move on to their next journey. This includes Angelina Slack, Chrisanne Hoyt, and Rosemary Ayers, three of our lovely and amazing educational assistants. Each of these people has brought their skills and gifts to the Ray School benefiting students and colleagues, and we'll miss them. Uh, hiring and welcoming of new staff. We're fortunate to have hired some amazing talent getting into this twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So welcome to our newest hires, uh, educational assistants, Sarah Ammon, Rebecca Patel, and Fabiola Newman. And then just because we're public now, and hopefully a lot of people are watching, we still have many open positions, and we would love to get your interest and your applications. Please feel free to contact me with any questions at all. We are still looking for a part-time Spanish teacher to work three days a week, five hours each day. Several one-to-ones to support our students, including some of our preschool students. Classroom educational assistants to work with our teachers and students here at Ray. And a digital learning specialist, which was a the renamed technology position to align with certification at New Hampshire, the OED, we call it the Digital Learning Specialist. So if you have interests or skills in any of these positions or like to learn more about it, even you all, please, please reach out and let me know. Um, as I pointed out earlier, you can see up here, we have fabulous new carpet and the music room risers. And much of the building has been painted and touched up by Amy Murphy, one of our educational assistants, who was hired with a painting crew to do some painting around the school. There have been tons of other projects happening around the building, and all of those occurring parallel to Hanover camps that were housed at Ray this summer, quite a feat. Our custodial crew is working so hard to clean all of the rooms and spaces that were used by camp and to prepare for continued reopening. And so I just want to extend my gratitude to the office staff who's been working all summer, to our custodial staff for getting so much done in limited time, uh, to the SAU for continued support as we reopen our schools again this spring, and to the buildings and grounds folks for scheduling a bunch of projects to keep our building in great shape. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Lauren. So I know you can't predict this, but are you anticipating additional students between now and the start? What's historically what happens, gain a couple more?
Yes, well, we may gain a couple more, but not a significant amount. Typically, um, towards the end of July and early August, people have made some healthy decisions. Um, so we don't anticipate a huge additional uptick at this point, but who knows?
And at what point for the fourth grade is a decision gonna have to be made? So right now, you're saying it's twenty-one to twenty-two students?
Yes, twenty-one to twenty-two students. Um, I haven't brought this before you because at this point, this is within the guidelines. If we were to receive like six to eight more students, we'd be pushing the upper end of the guidelines for grades three through five, except for in our policies. So I'm gonna approach you again at that point.
Two questions. Yeah, um, I read on line somewhere that kindergartners had sort of pulled out of public education last year and rose because of pandemic. So I'm wondering if there was an influx more than we expect normally with our first graders or we saw any of that, or where where the sort of extra thirty are coming in or if it's all over?
Sure. So, uh, I guess when we spoke in the spring, and I was thinking, we were thinking about the different numbers of sections. We were actually predicting that kindergarten have four sections and we have five sections. Um, we thought that second grade was gonna have five sections, but they have four sections. And we thought that fifth grade was gonna have four sections and they have five sections. So we saw a lot of students across all the grades. Um, but the significant ones that were unanticipated were kindergarten and fifth grade. We actually had to add sections there and remove sections from other grades to accommodate that, um, for the numbers. Um, I didn't hear a lot of stories like this, but I know that we have some kindergarten students, um, who elected to do kindergarten having had, um, a year away in either homeschooling or just not participating in a schooling program last year for kindergarten. So they're joining us this year, which I think represents some of the larger kindergarten size that we're seeing.
And then my second question, and hold this for a year. I have a fourth grader, but I think that class, Lauren's laughing because she knows what I'm gonna say. I think that class has always been sort of on the tipping point. And we've had other classes through the years that have gone through and been like right on that line. We're always saying, do we do sixteen, seventeen, or do we do twenty-one, twenty-two? And I guess I'm just wondering if we're tracking that over time to make sure it's not the same kids year after year who have the larger classes every single time as they go through. I don't know if there's anything we can do about that, but.
I think that's a good point, and, uh, we can certainly track those. Um, I know that last year in person, those classes weren't as large because some of the third grade students had elected to do remote learning and not their fourth grade. We did have sort of an influx back of students. Um, but we'll certainly keep an eye on it, especially if that crew comes into the fifth grade and those things recalibrate with, um, sort of the pandemic response at this point.
So the other question regarding the kindergartners. So as you said, there's potentially a large group that is basically a year older than normal kindergartners. So I assume there's, I, my kids are eighteen to twenty-two, so I can't remember, but emotionally, physically, mentally, they're one year advanced than most kindergartners. Are there any anticipated concerns about that?
Great question. Um, so for all, for those kindergartners where that story was the case, um, we spoke to all of those families, um, to determine sort of age-wise, are they just gonna be older? Like if they had entered a year ago, were they gonna be on the younger side and now they're gonna be on the older side? Um, we had lots of great conversations about whether kindergarten or first grade was the best placement. So we do have kids that we said, okay, we understand kindergarten might be where your head's at, but let's talk about what we can do for first grade considering, you know, the development of our child. Um, so I do feel confident in what we're going to receive for pay. We're not gonna have a large age range. We're gonna have the usual younger kids and older kids that we're typically seeing.
Any pushback from parents for only offering the remote option?
I've heard from only one family so far. Um, just a respectful question about whether or not we are going to consider offering it. Um, but other than that, no, I have not received any pushback.
Okay. Uh, following up on Rick's first question, is it, so is there gonna be parsing out of like younger kindergartners in one class, the older kindergartners in another class, or not really?
No, that's not something, something that we would typically do. Um, typically, we receive students and, uh, just because chronologically they're a certain age, that doesn't mean that their profile is, is a certain way or set in stone. Um, one great book that actually responsive classroom relies heavily on is something called Yard Sticks. And within a grade, they'll give, um, sort of student, general student profiles and development, um, for three different ages. So for instance, for kindergarten, they would give an age profile for somebody who's on the younger side of five, even four-year-olds, because they have to consider that, five-year-olds and six-year-olds. So we will be looking at the developmental needs. We don't typically have the older group versus the younger group. Um, and we meet kids where they are in kindergarten.
Any questions? Jenny?
Yeah, it's not a question. I'm just looking at some actual numbers on the attendance or, you know, um. Yeah. So historically, I mean, we had kidneys as high as seventy-five. Um, and actually, we're back up to where our actuals were for nineteen twenty. We're at four ninety-one. So that's, you know, that's great news that we bounced back kind of, the folks back in. Um, so that's, it's interesting, but yeah, we've had kidneys as high as seventy-five. Uh, not often, but on occasion, it was probably a level class.
Thank you, Lauren.
You're welcome.
At this point, we're gonna move on to business requiring discussion. The draft twenty-two, twenty-three budget guidelines, timeline, quick. Jenny?
Correct. Yeah, the, um, draft meeting timeline is also posted there. Uh, it has been sent, it was sent out, I think, right around August fifth for everybody to please take a look at and get it on your calendars, especially if you're involved in any of the, uh, budget building meetings or if you just wanna come and, you know, view them or participate, you know, bring the information. Um, we welcome all, all folks. Uh, they're open to the public. And our first one actually will be the kickoff meeting scheduled for Tuesday, August seventeenth, from eleven to twelve. Um, I did have a chance to get the quick model done today. Um, keeping in mind, um, that we are entering into um, negotiations for both our teachers' union and our support staff union. And between those two unions, they probably make up ninety, I'd say ninety-two percent of all your staff here at the school. Um, so what I did do is go through the current census that we use to build this year, which we know there's been a lot of changes to. We'll update that between now and October bill. Um, but we historically use the same census that we use to build the current school year we're in. But I did go through and I counted how many steps we're going, you know, how many folks had steps available to them and at least put that dollar amount in so we could get a rough idea of if there's nothing added to scale and we don't know where it's gonna shake out. But steps based on what the average step cost is right now have been, uh, added into those lines. Uh, that's why the notes says projected steps only. Um, that being said, steps are not guaranteed in New Hampshire. We have to have a tentative agreement ratified to go on a warrant, uh, by the third, I think it's the third Thursday agenda. So, but I did include those just to be given an idea of if that did go through like that, what it would look like. We've also included, uh, five percent increase for insurance uh, based on what the insurance elections were on the prior census. Um, we also, and actually it should say the twenty-one, twenty-two census, sorry, not the twenty-two. Um, I don't know, that's right, because we built twenty-one, twenty-two, the twenty-one, twenty-one. Um, I'm in three years right now, sorry. Then we've, uh, taken the CPI at July twenty-one, which is actually driven quite high, higher than it has in many years, at four point three percent, uh, and driven that in under, uh, all other programming costs uh, to just, you know, put something in there. And also, let's see, I'm just going down through here. Um, with, so if you look at the midway point, the total KQ five operating budget, which makes up eighty-one percent of the total Ray School budget, uh, with the tuition costs removed, so we can compare apples to apples this year. Um, we would be up about two and a half percent based on what's been projected on the quick model. Um, and then if you add in all the expenditures that are not direct to the K five operating budget, uh, the SAU expenses we've, um, budgeted flat, the special ed and district tuition, you see a big jump there, and that's actually projected right now based on actual for this year. We're trending over budget coming into twenty-one, twenty-two. We're up a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over what was budgeted. Uh, we'll bring you a report on that at the next meeting. Um, the regular ed transportation, that's a projection because this year we got an extension on our contract that year we're in. And then we really need to go up to this for the next year, okay? Um, capital expenses, we, um, I put that in with the same projection of status quo like this year. Um, you know, depending on, once we reevaluate where we are, that could absolutely be adjusted. Uh, debt service, that's actual, and then the interpon transactions, you make that decision as we go along. So at the end of the day, with everything in, um, we would look at a three, based on this build, it's a first draft, a three point two eight percent increase. Keep, keep in mind, the sixth grade tuition costs have been carved out of that number, okay? So we can look at it apples to apples. Um, those expenditures for the Hanover taxpayers, uh, will be, uh, seen in the Dresden budget uh, with the revenue, there will be a revenue offset. So if we were to project it based on CPI, it would be higher at four point two percent.
So why, yeah, why, some of the CPIs are four point two and some of them are four point three?
Oh, I'm sorry, because I changed one and I changed the other. Four point three is the New England, is the Northeast Regional, and four point two is actually New England only because Northeast Regional takes in Mid-Atlantic and New England, and so it skews it a little bit. Sometimes it skews a lot. This way it skews a little. So there's a tenth of a difference. I'm sorry. I thought I changed it in the top one, which would then run through the whole corner.
Yeah, it, it bumped, it bumped back and forth between four and three and four.
Yeah, if I had changed the top one, Rick, under the regular ed, it would have driven through the whole thing. I changed the wrong one, sorry. Um, my, my mistake.
So we're actually gonna be slightly less.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I can fix that and hand it reposted for that one. But it gives you a quick idea, it's a quick morale. Again, I'm gonna say, as in the prior year, this is gonna show higher than where we'll probably actually come out specifically on salaries because there's been a lot of turnover since last year, a lot, a lot of turnover. Good. Okay. And most all the new hires that Lauren and her team have done um, are, are trending lower in the salary class.
Is this assuming that all the open positions will have people hired for? Is this assuming as of today?
No, it assumes all divisions will be.
Any other questions?
Is there one on Zoom?
What's that?
We have one on Zoom.
You have a question on Zoom?
Yeah, we got a hand raised.
Oh, um.
You want it?
Yeah, go ahead and you can let them ask. Is it in?
Yeah, it's still muted though.
Hi, you're in the room. If you could unmute, identify who you are and which town you live in. Okay.
So, hey, so, oh, she doesn't wanna talk, or?
Okay.
All right.
I've done that many a time. Any other questions for Jenny? So for the Hanover School Board, I'm on it, Kim's on it.
That's it for Hanover?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
It's a schedule question. I, I've been trying to, I was, I'm a Google Calendar and it's not, it hasn't posted. Um, so can you just repeat the times, the Hanovers at eleven?
It's not posted?
It's not, well, it's not up there right now. I don't, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, uh, Tuesday the seventeenth at eleven. Dresden at ten.
At ten, okay.
Dresden at ten, and then Hanover at eleven, why not?
Yeah, it's just not, it's on our internal, uh, the, the.
But not?
Yeah, but I don't think it's on the calendar yet.
I think Ryan was waiting for us to approve, myself or Kim to approve the agenda.
I understand.
Okay. So now we're gonna move on to business requiring action. We're gonna approve expenditures, the minutes from June ninth, July twenty-first, non-public minutes, and the acceptance of Brittany James's, uh,
Joyce.
Joices, um, resignation.
She's a James Joyce, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I have, I have famous novels on one. So if someone would like to make a motion, park it aside. Then.
Move to approve items B through F by consent.
Another second. Kelly?
But I do have a comment too. I, I think I need to be added to the minutes for June ninth. Not that I care, but since I'm listed as saying many things and not voting, because I've been had to leave, I think I'm technically supposed to be in the attendees. Good.
So, um, based on that, uh, as amended, yes?
Should I say it again?
Yes.
Well, move to provide us B through F as amended by consent.
Second, Kelly, and Hanover. You know, I'm just. So at this point, uh, I reported the chair. So as I mentioned earlier, Brittany stepped down. She and her family are moving to DC, and, uh, we're gonna miss having her on the board. We did, uh, put an ad in the Valley News last Friday, uh, asking people to uh, volunteer to serve on the board. They have until the, I believe it's the twentieth or the twenty-four to email me their, uh, statement on why they wanna serve on the board. We will then, uh, have anyone that's, uh, nominated themselves to come in in September at the Hanover School Board to be, uh, met, to meet the board, answer any questions, and then we will select who will serve on the board at that point. Brittany, uh, served as our secretary for the Dresden Board, secretary of the SAU Board. She was our SAU Policy Committee.
She was on it, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, the Central Staff Development Committee and the NHS BA and the Liaison Office. So none of those really are Hanover positions.
The NHS BA is.
Is that the Hanover?
Yeah, I think everyone's comfortable with that. I can continue.
Great, thank you.
I did submit our resolution just before the deadline, as I remember, oh, wait a minute.
Okay, so Kelly, thank you for volunteering. And then I believe at the SAU Dresden meetings, they will, uh, probably assign a new member for their position. And that is all I have to report tonight. Uh, our next meeting will be September fifteenth. And I'm gonna turn it over to Robin.
But I, I just was looking on the website. I think it'd be, if we can, post.
Yes, I was just thinking the same, I was sending an email right now.
Okay, awesome. Post the announcement because some people don't see the paper. Um, and if communications are going out to parents and that goes on a favor for the, the, the year, I think that it's doable to include it in a release or something, something that would be awesome.
Great.
Thank you.
Let me, you know, look at the ad we posted just to see when the actual date is.
This is only in the, in the physical paper?
It was in the Valley News, and I don't know if it went out on any social media. April, I mean, August twenty-first to submit any interest in serving. And it's, uh, just send an email or your statement to me as the chair. Okay.
Okay, so last night I presented the information from the Pandemic Response Committee at our reopening, and, um, I uploaded the framework document for you. And I thought, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those after the presentation last night. If you need more information or, or details, I'm happy to answer that.
So how often does your team meet? Is it now, is it getting closer to the start of the school year you're gonna have?
We have more, we have a meeting next week on Tuesday. We're meeting on the seventh to talk about, you know, how the first week of reopening has been. And then I scheduled monthly meetings, but we've said on an as needed basis this year. We had meetings last year every week, almost. Um, so we're gonna see if we can cut back a little bit, but I think probably more frequently in the beginning, and then as things change.
So you, you know, everyone's watching the news, what's going on in other states. Is there any sense that we're gonna have any direction from the states?
They are really linking it up some schools.
Okay.
You know, we've gotten vibes from the CDC, which has been good. The, um, you know, the DA for the board has given vibes. There's been a lot of nationwide vibes. It's been really quite good, but the state has basically left it up to the schools in a convention in the newspaper. Every district is choosing different options. You know, some are going with masks optional, some are banning masks like we are, you know, for certain periods of time. So it's really all over the place. But I think, you know, we should just stick to the vibes that we used the last year and look at the rates around us. And now with the added vaccination fees, we can continue to look at that, and hopefully that will help guide our decision-making throughout the year.
Great.
So since it's a different, a separate audience tonight, even looking into your crystal ball, do you think it's safe for parents who might be worried or watching and wondering, is it safe to assume that very likely the Ray School will remain masked for much longer than the first two weeks?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, without, one of the criteria that we put in is the eighty percent vaccination rate, and that will definitely not be a thing at all for, for either of the elementary schools anytime in the near future. I mean, we don't even have an estimated date for when the vaccines would be approved for children old and under. Originally, they were saying by the fall, but that has, you know, come and gone really. So, and there's not been a lot of discussion about it at this point, how soon it will actually happen. So I don't really see it happening too soon in the near future. And if we continue with mask mandate in Hanover, it's going to take us a while, even in the other schools to consider that too. So I think it's just good practice for us to follow the town ordinances because, you know, we don't necessarily have to, but I feel like if people are expecting to be listening everywhere else, it makes sense that you would follow the same, uh, means.
Yeah, Lauren, are you guys resurrecting the space theme this year or is it something new, new and surprising?
Um, I'm gonna, I'm giving a surprise. The space theme is gone. We're done with the space theme. Um, but it's yet to be told. We will see what comes out in our first two in-service days.
Looking forward to it.
I'm sort of surprised that we are not able to notify families if there's a COVID case in the school.
We decided not to because last year, really, we had so few cases. And with no contact tracing this year, it's such a different situation. So we said we would notify families if there are clusters cases.
So for our audience, you give a technical definition of what a cluster?
So a cluster will be two or more cases in a certain area of the school. So I mean, it's.
I would just worry about the lag time. Like, yeah, there were a few cases last year, but the parents knew there were a few cases. And now it's up to the parents' imaginations. I can see there being some pushback there.
Yeah. And, you know, if we get the feedback that parents really want to hear, that's something we can change. Because we did talk about that in our meeting and we had mixed feelings about it. Whether we should continue with it or whether we should not. You know, is it worrisome when people hear that? Is it not? Fortunately, last year we did not have a lot of cases and I think hopefully that will continue into this year. We've seen the masking work. So that was one of the pieces that we felt like maybe we don't need that extra labor in at this point.
I would just be concerned that last year, no schools upfront with cases. And if there are not, then the social media and Valley News and COVID counts by the time will fuel discussions of that. The school's not saying anything.
Okay, that's a good point. Well, certainly let us know, you know, if that's what you're hearing from other members of the community, if they would prefer that. It's easy enough for us to change and do. So.
Well, one thing that I really appreciated in our meeting is that we several times returned to the, when we started to feel emotional too, was returning to science is what got us through last year. And following state and CDC guidelines is really what got us through last year, even when things felt really emotional. And so this isn't just like a Hanover or SAU 70 recommendation. We're taking it from the CDC. But like Robin said, with a lot of, a lot of debate and thinking, but going back to what we know, what the science shows and what the schools are safe places. There weren't lots of transmission happening inside the schools.
There was more transmission for us.
For, yeah, sorry, more globally. Yeah, if you're in the United States. And so put this in place because it was part of what the CDC recommendations were. But this is, you know, it always has been an ever evolving process as we see it, at least safely.
So what would happen in this scenario where a group of unvaccinated kids, there's a confirmed case in the, in the room? So is there, is there remote learning? Is it shut down entirely? Is it as is unless there's a second case?
So there won't be any, there will be no contact tracing within the schools. It will basically be if we find out there's a confirmed case in the school, now it's moved to the home, really. That's the place where the quarantine will take place. So we're bareless of vaccination status. Anyone that is living within the home of that child or staff member would have to quarantine for 10 days in New Hampshire and 14 in Vermont. There's not an expectation that if we have a case in the school that we would go to the means that we did last year, like trying to determine how many students came within three to six feet of that child for 15 minutes or more. Because what they found in the research across the country is that there was not, there is not a significant amount of in-school transmission when students were wearing masks. And so that's why they're removing that piece of the, of the contact tracing within the schools and the lack of quarantining. Because people felt like it was just more disruptive to the schools than necessary. You know, when you think about the few cases that we had in the high school, we had significant numbers of students that we ended up removing. It wasn't as significant at the elementary schools because generally the kids were cohorting and they're single class. So, but still, those, all of those kids would be removed in some cases from that classroom for a significant period of time. So the research is showing us now that that probably was not necessary at the time. And so that's why there's a move away from the contact tracing within schools that are holding masks. So if that makes sense.
I just want to hear from one thing you just said. I want to make sure I understand it correctly. You said that if there's a case of a child who has it, that that family, including siblings, have to quarantine and not go to school?
Yeah.
It's different than last year, right? Last year siblings could go.
Mm-hmm. Well, okay, so, yes. The, the situation now though is because they're considered close contacts, very close contacts, living within the same household. So those individuals would have to quarantine.
So.
I think they do.
If they're on. Last year, we were told that if the, if the, if a sibling did not have it, they could continue going to school.
I, I could be wrong, but I think if, if someone in the household had just a positive, the household had to quarantine. If someone in the household was asked to close contact quarantine, the siblings did not have close contact.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
Thank you, Robin.
You're welcome. And always, if you have any questions or concerns about anything, feel free to contact me. We're always thinking about different pieces that come up at each of our meetings. You know, well, someone will say, oh, what about this? We didn't think that of this piece. So if you think things, I'm happy to bring them to the committee.
Thank you.
Good. All right. As we went over yesterday, just wanted to update our, our school community on what's happening district-wide. This is crunch time. We have our custodial maintenance staff. As you can see, we look around, getting everything shined up and in good working order, getting our classrooms set up. And we have, we're in the middle of our big IT project right now. So there's a lot of wiring going on. We, we do have a supply chain delay that's like holding up some of that work, but we're going to keep pushing and getting all that work done as well. HR is scrambling along with Lauren and their hiring committees to get all of our position staff. And that looks, it's going to probably continue right up until the start of school. Yeah, exactly. Jamie will be doing her report soon, but her, her end of the, of the SAU is incredibly busy. Jamie in particular with transportation as well as getting ready for our next budget cycle, which we're already in. And so, so plenty, plenty going on right now as we enjoy the last couple of weeks of summer before school starts. We do have some major initiatives that we're undertaking this year. We are resuming the strategic planning process and we'll be discussing that as a leadership team. We got the four chairs have met a couple of times to organize that work and will be appealing to board members to work on different subcommittees in the very short term. In fact, Brian didn't email people today. She will be probably in the next couple of days. Another big thing that came out of our last negotiation session was that we, we just, we, we agreed with the HEA to review our evaluation supervision model. And so that work is, is really in draft form. Right now, we're pending a couple of things. We need to make a formal representation to both the boards and the HEA. And we'll be working on, again, assuming that, that the boards and the HEA approve the plan that we put together, we'll have to plan implementation. And so we know there's, there's a lot to it. There's a lot of professional development required. So we plan on doing sort of a pilot this year. With some volunteers who will, who will work within that system. We're also looking at changing the percentages of teachers that we're evaluating in any given year on a rotating cycle. That part of what we can do with the existing model that we're using. But that's going to set the stage for some important professional development. So we're, we, we have agreed to adopt the Charlotte Danison model. It's a framework for teaching. It's widely used throughout the country. And that would replace our SAU standards of best practice that are currently undergirding most of our work that we do at PD and Supervision Evaluation. That's going to require some training. And so we'll be looking, working with the leadership team to figure out how we can do that in a phased way. And not impose too much on, on time that we need for other training as well. But if we do that through the course of the year, we have a model already tested at the, at Marion Cross, who adopted the Danison model as well. And they actually were the partner with a really outstanding trainer from Vermont NEA, who's also a part of the Danison group. And she's informed us that there's a New Hampshire counterpart to the New Hampshire NEA. And so being able to tap into that high quality professional development. I think we'll go a long way to gaining trust among the teachers as well because it's coming really from the teachers association. So those are some of the really big things that are happening. The, the nice thing about the Danison model and the training NEA is doing is it's, it's grounded in equity. And so one of the things that came out in our discussions about diversity, equity, inclusion this past year is that making sure we have a rigorous and you know, a really strong curriculum that's well documented, consistent is, is essentially, it's a prerequisite if we're going to talk about equity. And it also sets the stage for curriculum review that we'll be doing. And so we were really pleased to see that that was the focus of the, the model that they're, they're establishing. So stay tuned. We'll be reporting on this as, as this work evolves and we'll be seeking input from the board and from the community as we dig into the strategic planning effort. That's really, that this will wrap into. And that's my report.
Good. Any comments or questions?
Yeah. So I won't be reporting on financials because we actually did that at the last special Hanover board meeting that we called it. It was pretty in-depth. So if anybody wants to see where the projection, the updated projection of where we're going to land for 2021, they should go to the prior meeting and everything that's posted there. Building projects. We still have a few larger ones here at the Ray School that are in process. Specifically, the largest one that we decided to include last year was the front entryway. We've been talking to a couple of architects because that will require architectural design to be stamped in order to embark on that. So we're trying to set up follow-up meetings with them and Lauren and her team. So we can come up with a really good design and we'll probably break ground on that over the steam and fines. We have secured all of the new door locks for the safety door locks and they are in. They're going to start installing them. That will be a process that will take a little while. But they're great locks that are very easy for very young children to enact in case of an emergency situation. We got a really good price on them and we've gone for all doors, all interior doors and everything. We also have, let's see, going on, still some more flooring going in. And that will probably happen. It, it won't all get done before the opening of school. And so some of it will probably get scheduled during December break and again during February, April breaks. But we have the money available and the budget to do this. What's going on here at Ray? Oh, the garden. So I think that they have been working on the garden with Nan Parsons out back. So that will be exciting. I know Tony's been talking to folks. So you just need a little bit more direction on what's necessary to get that up and running. Transportation update. I sent a survey out two days late. I want to throw that out by my. The transportation survey went out today. I tried to grab all parents. I may not have done it properly with the messenger. And most of the IT tech teams are super busy, so I tried to do it on my own. If you did not receive an email from me regarding signing up for transportation bus service, you can go to the district website at www.sau70.org. Go to the department's transportation tab and there's a link there that will take you to the survey. I try to make it as easy as possible this year so that everybody can report all their children on one survey. It doesn't have to be an absolute, you're going to ride every single day or whatever. You can just tell me the information that you have. Anything will help help us determine that we have enough capacity on our buses to pick everybody up and into school on time. We will be requiring masks on buses this year. It's part of the national protocols, gloves protocol, you know, best practice. We will not have bus monitors on board. There will be aides on board of some of the buses, as there has been in the past. We, let's see, we will not be taking temperatures at the door. We would ask folks to, you know, self-monitor before they go out to the bus stops. And if anybody has any other questions, I'd say, you know, start by either emailing me or go to the link at the top of our webpage. It's an info link. You can send any questions in there and then it's routed by our communication specialist, Callan. Let's see, what else is going on? Food service. I think we should be good to go here at the Ray School. No changes that I know of in personnel at this point. What else is going on? Let's see. Food, transportation, maintenance. I think that's it. Finance, but that's kind of boring. But so we talked about budget and we're kicking it off. We're knee deep in the new one and we're wrapping up the old one and we're starting the next one.
And any questions? I have a question. So the, I know we even asked this. So the technology initiative. I assume we're not tearing wire and stuff. So it's not disruptive to the schools, right? It's, it's more of the servers of the.
No, it's wiring, all the cables.
So when do we anticipate it being complete?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. That would be Josh Malloy or Tucker.
Josh has a, that right now has a. Well, one of the things we're having a problem with right now is there are certain components that the people that are working against all need that are backordered or can't.
They take that for your car, dude.
Right.
And so the chips are, so, so this will be an ongoing all through the academic year.
And we're. Sharp the turtle.
Sure. So I spoke to Josh yesterday about the project that they're, they're working really hard up at the middle school. And like I said, there's been an issue with just getting supplies in. So when they're finishing up, about two days after the middle school, they're going to reach out to me. And we're going to see how close and tight we are to the beginning of the school year. We think that we can get it done before this, we have to open up the school, then we'll do it. Otherwise, we're going to create a schedule once the school year starts where things aren't happening, when students aren't building.
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of what I'm, kind of putting here. Any other comments, questions? Kelly?
A question probably for a future meeting, but I'm curious about some of the different projects that are sort of, I think, in the hopper still. I just happened to be out on the basketball court and I know I developed a new, I think we had new hoops coming there, right? But then we got, maybe we didn't.
That's, that was previous year.
The adjustable hoops?
But we, so yeah, those are, those are done. The hoops are done. The goals are done. Okay. Um, the Bridgman project that we had outside was by our PE teachers who wanted to do some stenciling. And yeah, add some additional games on the green top area as well as along the sidewalks. And that is up to them to do. So I've been in touch with them a little bit this summer to see when they would like to get started on that.
Okay, that's, there's, I would just happen to see there are so many cracks in that area and that, which I mean, with our weather, I don't, I certainly don't have the material solution for that.
No, we do a ceiling, a ceiling on it and a maintenance on it. It's a scheduled, I think, over two years. So it's either on the schedule now or would be for spring. I don't know. I didn't bring my notes on it.
The question that we wouldn't want them stenciling until the.
That's one of the whole ups we have right now is understanding what that schedule looks like. So we don't get things on the ground at the.
And I know Tony was actually reaching out to the companies that, it's kind of a process, right? So here's the process. He was reaching out to the company to do the installation of that product. And it's a specific and special product to see what the cost would be to replace it, to get out and replace it with new. If we are going to do that, we want to do it when we do the rest of the projects of the same type of aggregate material. And that would probably run into a Dresden project as well. So that's part of the not wanting to embark on replacing this one before we do the larger projects at the sister district. Because you get better pricing, the more that you, you know, order and lay. So that's why we've been repairing it instead of carrying it up the place. But I mentioned, and I talked to him earlier about you, but I did ask him about this last time we met. I can't remember.
Moving on to committee reports. I don't think we have any committee from the summer. So, so at this point, we have two items to discuss and not public. So if someone would like to make a motion. So at this point, we have two items to discuss and non-public. So if someone would like to make a motion.
Ben? We've entered a non-public session on RSA 91A3C personnel.
Second? Kelly? Kelly?
Marcelo, yeah.
Marcelo?
De Blasio.
Johnson, yes?
He is.
He is. Okay, so. 808. So if someone would like to make a motion to approve the items we just discussed. Marcelo?
Oh, moved, I was not, I raised my hand. Moved to approve the corrected 2021, 22 nomination sheet and new hire of the LPS Learning Specials has presented.
We're in second round. Uh, hands. All, all in favor, raise your hand. So I like to include everyone in my class. I always watch for the people that don't raise their hands. Okay, great. So that has passed. And anyone have any agenda items for next meeting? Please let us know and Lauren just remind me when we have our next meeting to ensure we do the SAS.
I will.
Should we have a spot set aside for like? Uh, pending nominees to discuss themselves?
Yeah, that will. That will be added to the agenda. That'll be during, I guess, the way we do a discussion and then we go with a non-public and roll.
Correct.
Do we require them just to turn out to be here in person?
Yes.
We have an address, yes.
Okay, at this point, if someone would like to adjourn the meeting. Good. Let's forget it. My second? Marcelo? And the dog on the horn, that.
Kenny, yes.
Johnson, yes.
De Blasio, I'll follow you. I don't think you have to be a little far.
I know, thank you.